Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's July 11th, 2024 Open Session. First, Ms. Costa, can you please take the role?
Certainly. Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Stidham?
Here.
Commissioner Argo?
I'm here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hewlett?
Here.
Thank you. Chair Goodman?
Here.
Commissioner Green?
Here.
Commissioner Tunstall-Williams, I believe is not present. Commissioner Dixon?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
And Commissioner Chuketti?
Here.
I'll note also that Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Matt Fliss with the Urban Design and Plan Review Division are also in the meeting.
Thank you very much, Ms. Costa. Noting the presence of a quorum, this meeting is called to order, and today's meeting is being livestreamed and will be available in a few days on the NCPC website as a video. And if there's no objection, the agenda as posted is adopted as the order of business. So we will now play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to share how we will be conducting business for the Commission. And following our staff presentations and any other testimony, I will ask for a motion in a second as appropriate. During Commission deliberations, I will use the round robin format to ask each Commissioner if they have any comments. At other times when the Commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute and indicate that they would like to be recognized. Agenda item number two is the Report of the Chair. And the first thing I have to say is that last month, we celebrated the NCPC centennial event, and it was excellent. It was just superior. And I'm going to say thank you to the staff who put this together. It was really outstanding. And I know that over 150 people attended. There was an excellent panel. And that was moderated by Ms. Costa. That was informative. And again, highly recommend, if you have a chance to view that video that you do, it was really, really tremendously informative and just excellent, excellent materials. So the name of the exhibit that was there that evening, that's also been created by our staff and collaborators, is called the Planning Washington: Capital and Community at the Downtown, this is all down at the Downtown Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library, but it will be traveling in the coming months. So you can also get that scheduled from our website. And I want to thank especially Julia Costa, Bezrat Mesgebi, Steve Stodigl, Steve Morgan, Johanna McCran, and all the NCPC staff for the efforts that they put into this excellent exhibit and the excellent event down at the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library. Just really thoroughly enjoyed it. And in addition, as we near the completion of our chambers in the agency office, I also want to thank the staff who are working so hard on that so that we can return in-person meetings in the future. So all of that, stay tuned for. Agenda item number three is Report from the Executive Director, Marcel Acosta. If you'd like to begin.
Yes, thank you, Chair Goodman, and good afternoon. I have two personnel announcements. First, Daniel Lee joins us as a summer intern. Daniel is the Rising Junior who recently transferred to Reservoir High School in Howard County, Maryland. He's a Kelly Scholar, Otters Program, and a member of the Environmental Engineering Club, Black Student Union, and Architecture Club. Daniel is interested in attending HBCU for undergrad and the University of Virginia for graduate school to study architecture. So welcome to NCPC. If you'll just turn around your camera and say hello, so people can see you.
Welcome, Mr. Lee.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm excited to get to know and work with all y'all, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity.
And we welcome you to our agency. I'm also pleased to welcome our new General Counsel, Megan Hoddle-Cox, to the Commission. Megan joins us from the U.S. Postal Service, where she served as a federal real estate attorney. Before the Postal Service, Megan was an associate at the Goldstone Stores Washington DC office, practicing real estate and land use law for almost a decade. She's also adjunct professor at George Washington University Law School. Megan brings extensive local land use, environmental, and real estate legal expertise to the Commission. And we're delighted to have Megan as part of our NCPT. So Megan, she wants to say a few words?
Thank you. I'm really delighted to be here.
Welcome, Megan. Welcome.
And many thanks to Chair Goodman and Vice Chair Hewlett for participating on the selection committee. So you do have a full written report in your package, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta, and welcome, Ms. Hoddle-Cox, and also Mr. Lee. We're really thrilled to have such quality individuals joining our team. We look forward to working with you. It's really wonderful to have you in place. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Were there any questions for the Executive Director? Hearing none. We're moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is a Legislative Report. Ms. Hoddle-Cox? Do you have anything to report today?
Thank you, Chair Goodman. I have one legislative item to report on this month, House Bill 8307, the Women Who Worked on the Home Front Memorial Location Act. The bill was introduced in the House on May 8th and was referred to the House Committee on Natural Resources. The bill proposes to provide for a memorial to commemorate the sacrifice and service of women who worked on the home front to support efforts of the U.S. military during World War II to be located in the Reserve or Area 1 on the Commemorative Areas map. That concludes my legislative report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoddle-Cox. Does the Commission have any questions for Ms. Hoddle-Cox today? Hearing none. Thank you for your report. Agenda item number five is the Consent Calendar, and there are two items on this month's Consent Calendar. The first is a request to approve Joint Base Anacostia-Bolling Installation Facilities Standards as a Final Master Plan. And the second item, or the next item, is to approve the preliminary site and building plans with comments for Fort Belvoir Veterinary Treatment Facility. Is there a motion to adopt the Consent Calendar?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Hewlett. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. It's been seconded by Commissioner McMahon. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion and take the role?
Certainly. Vice Chair Hewlett made the motion. Commissioner McMahon seconded, and with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
You. Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon? I'll come back to Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Chuketti?
Yeah.
Yes. And Commissioner Dixon, are you back on?
Yeah, I was on. Yes. And yes.
Thank you. That motion has carried. Chair Goodman?
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Now we're moving to the Open Session Agenda Items. Agenda Item Number Five is to approve comments on concept plans for the Hirshhorn Museum Building and Plaza Revitalization. Ms. Shipman is making the presentation. Ms. Shipman?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Goodman and Commissioners. The Smithsonian Institution submitted concept plans for the Hirshhorn Museum and Sculpture Garden Revitalized Building and Plaza Project. As a reminder, for the concept review stage, the Commission is focused on topics such as general consistency with NCPC policies, appropriateness of the project for the site, identification of any complex issues, and review of any meaningful alternatives. The museum is located on the south side of the National Mall, between the Smithsonian Arts and Industries Building and the National Air and Space Museum, and within the Smithsonian South Mall campus. This map shows the bounds of the project area, and you can see its relationship to the below-grade Ninth Street Expressway Tunnel. The building and plaza revitalization is the third and final phase of a series of improvements to the campus previously approved by the Commission that include the Phase One Building Envelope Repair Project, completed in 2023, and the Phase Two Sculpture Garden Revitalization Project, which is under construction. The aim of the project is to provide new types of art exhibition and programming spaces and expanded public amenities to enhance the visitor experience and to accommodate increased visitorship. Also critical to the revitalization is a comprehensive upgrade of the museum's aging infrastructure and building systems to improve its energy efficiency and resilience. The Hirshhorn was designed by architect Gordon Bunshaft of Skidmore, Owens, and Merrill and opened to the public in 1974. It is considered a contributing resource of the National Mall Historic District, which is listed in the National Register of Historic Places and has been determined to be individually eligible for listing. The applicant has conducted three Section 106 consulting parties meetings to discuss potential project impacts to this historic resource, and the consultation process is ongoing. The period of significance is considered to be 1974 to 1981 and includes several character-defining features. Some of those features most relevant to this project include the drum-like form, central courtyard and circular fountain, sculptural concrete piers, coffered ceiling, and setting for the display of sculpture, glazed entrance lobby and revolving doors, and battered perimeter walls. The plaza was redesigned in 1993 by James Urban, and these modifications fall outside the period of significance. The existing museum has several current deficiencies, including accessibility and wayfinding, perimeter security and visitor screening, waterproofing and flooding, and building systems that the revitalization aims to address. Here is an overall view from the Sculpture Garden of the proposed revitalization and an exploded axon view of the building levels on the right. The primary changes will occur on the plaza and lower levels, as well as Level Four and the rooftop. I'll now go through the six main components of the revitalization. The first is the lower-level expansion and Sculpture Garden connection. The existing lower-level plan is shown on the left. The expansion shown on the right will increase gallery and program spaces and visitor amenities. It will also include upgraded facilities for back-of-house functions and building systems. Prior to this phase, the Sculpture Garden Revitalization Project will reestablish a historic underground passage and plaza stair connecting to the Sculpture Garden. This phase will then provide a new direct entrance to the museum building from the Sculpture Garden at the lower level. Here is a view from the Sculpture Garden Tunnel looking towards the new lower-level entry and opened plaza stair. The existing concrete walls flanking the stairs are removed to allow in natural light and views to the lower-level public spaces. Staff recommends the Commission support this entry design, which provides universal access between the museum and garden. The second revitalization component is the plaza and perimeter revitalization. This slide shows the existing and proposed plaza plan. The proposed design on the right introduces organically shaped galleries of different sizes and ground plane treatments carved out of perimeter vegetation to provide a variety of settings for art and programming. The perimeter walls will be reconstructed in kind, and new permanent perimeter security will include hardened handrails on the north and removable bollards at the south entry. The accessible entry to the plaza off of Jefferson Drive is currently tucked into the northwest corner of the perimeter wall. This design proposes centralizing the ramps and integrating them into the main north plaza stairs. This is an aerial view sketch of the preferred plaza concept design. Staff recommends the Commission support the plaza design, which introduces dynamic spaces for art and programming, improves accessibility, and increases canopy cover and shade for visitor comfort. As the design is developed, staff recommends the plant palette integrate native species and pollinator plantings where possible in alignment with guidance in the Conference of Plan and NCPC's Pollinator Best Practices Resource Guide. The courtyard fountain is another character-defining feature of the plaza. It currently has significant functional and waterproofing deficiencies, and because of its size and central location, does not allow large events to take place in the courtyard. The applicant evaluated several options to address the existing issues. The preferred concept creates a hybrid fountain that includes a skylight to the expanded lower level. Jets move to the perimeter of the skylight, creating a vertical plume similar to what exists today, and a stage for events. These are views of the proposed fountain with water and without water as an event stage. Overall, staff believes this hybrid design balances historic preservation considerations while accommodating new uses, and recommends the Commission support the fountain design. In terms of streetscape improvements, along Independence Avenue, the street trees will be moved from the perimeter wall to the south side of the street for consistency and to improve shade for pedestrians. A second row of trees is possible along Seventh Street, and street trees are not proposed along the northern side of the perimeter on Jefferson Drive. This shows the proposed streetscape along Independence Avenue, with the trees moved to the curb and a reduced pedestrian clear zone. Staff recommends the applicant consider reducing the width of the existing planting bed at the perimeter wall to provide a minimum six-foot tree box at the curb and to allow a wider, clear pedestrian zone. As I mentioned, Jefferson Drive is proposed to remain without trees as exists currently. The applicant states this is to preserve the already narrow sidewalks and to maintain open views between the National Mall, Sculpture Garden, and Museum. The existing sidewalk along Seventh Street is proposed to be realigned to introduce a planted six-foot buffer between the loading dock guardrail and pedestrian zone. A second row of trees is possible in this buffer zone, which staff recommends the Commission support to improve shading for pedestrians. Throughout concept development, the applicant team has diligently consulted guidance in the Monumental Core Streetscape Design Guidelines, recently approved by the Commission. Staff recommends that as the streetscape designs are developed, the applicant continue to follow these guidelines. Staff also recommends the applicant continue to coordinate with the District Department of Transportation regarding the Ninth Street Expressway Tunnel and streetscape improvements. The third revitalization component is the lobby expansion, also on the plaza level. The glazed entrance lobby and revolving doors are character-defining features. However, the doors do not meet current standards for universal accessibility. As mentioned previously, visitorship is estimated to increase significantly over the coming years, and the original lobby is too constrained to accommodate accessible vestibules, security screening, adequate circulation, and visitor program spaces, as shown in the TESSFIT diagram on this slide. Right now, the museum uses temporary vestibules to accommodate screening and an accessible entry. These temporary facilities would no longer be needed with the expansion. The proposed lobby is expanded symmetrically by two coffer bays to the east and west of the southern piers, and the historic revolving doors are removed to not confuse visitors as to which entrance to use. The main visitor entrance would be on the southwest end of the lobby. This is a view from within the courtyard of the original lobby and another view of the proposed lobby. Staff recommends the Commission support the project goals to improve the visitor experience, comfort, and accessibility through expansion and reconfiguration of the lobby, as well as the conceptual design approach to retain the lobby symmetry and transparency. However, even with removal of the revolving doors, the visitor entry point remains tucked away from immediate view as visitors enter the plaza, requiring a clear entry-wayfinding solution. Staff recommends the applicant further study how to design integral wayfinding to ensure the museum entrance locations are clear for visitors entering the plaza from the National Mall and Independence Avenue. The next revitalization component is the fourth-floor gallery expansion. With the goal of increasing space for art exhibition, the support functions and staff areas of Level Four will be relocated to the lower level and replaced with expansive new galleries. The proposed fourth-floor design would provide a column-free environment with available natural light to accommodate major large-scale works, as well as site-specific exhibits. This type of space does not exist in any other part of the museum. The lower-level expansion will include larger-scale galleries. However, these will not have the unique round form or natural light of the fourth floor. The applicant's vision for an open, new, fourth-floor gallery limits the potential use of the floor for mechanical equipment. The fifth component is the proposed rooftop mechanical space. The applicant states that the footprint of mechanical spaces required for the museum needs to be almost doubled for code compliance, increased visitorship, and increased building area. Fresh air intake for the building must also come from a minimum of 100 feet from areas where vehicles may be stopped with their engine running and 40 feet above finished grade. Additionally, if all the mechanical equipment is placed on the lower level, the shaft space in the plaza-level piers would need to increase by three to four times the existing size, which would significantly impact the perception of the floating drum and piers. To avoid these impacts, the equipment is proposed to be divided between the roof level and the lower level. A new rooftop structure is proposed to enclose the additional mechanical equipment. It will be circular and plan, 10 feet 9 inches in height above the parapet, and set back and biased to the inner ring of the existing building to reduce visibility from the exterior. The enclosure would, however, still be visible from several points along the National Mall, Constitution Avenue, and across Independence Avenue. While other buildings on the National Mall have undergone mechanical retrofits, this project is not directly comparable due to the constraints mentioned previously and the potential impacts to the building form. Here are a few existing external views of the building and a view from the courtyard. And the same views with the proposed rooftop mechanical enclosure. Again, existing views. And now with the proposed rooftop mechanical enclosure. Because of the historic and architectural significance of the museum, staff recommends the Commission find that a new mechanical rooftop enclosure would impact the views of the museum from the National Mall and surrounding context. The added mechanical rooftop enclosure would also alter the experience of the building from the interior courtyard due to the change in proportion of the building height to sky view. Understanding the sensitivity of the proposal because of impacts to the original design and views from the National Mall, the applicant team continues to study the appropriate form, articulation, and materiality to decrease visibility. They plan to continue with a variety of visualization, solar study, and mock-up strategies as the design is developed. These are views of the initial massing variations for the roof line of the mechanical enclosure. Staff would like to acknowledge the applicant team's thorough analysis of these complex issues to date. However, additional study is needed to ensure the least impactful design strategy to address the stated mechanical infrastructure needs. Through the Section 106 consultation process and agency coordination, several questions have been raised about alternatives to placing a visible mechanical structure on the museum rooftop, such as placing the equipment on the fourth level, syncing it into the coffered ceiling, or specifying different equipment. Other suggestions were to minimize the height by removing the mechanical enclosure roof or by changing the stacking and configuration of the equipment. The applicant has responded that each of these options has either technical limitations or other programmatic and design trade-offs. To assist the Commission in weighing potential trade-offs for the decision-making process, staff recommends the applicant continue to study alternative locations, configurations, and sizing for the proposed equipment to further explore all reasonable options that avoid the visual impact of a visible rooftop mechanical enclosure. And if avoidance isn't feasible, analyze methods to reduce the height and visual impact of the proposed rooftop mechanical enclosure, particularly as viewed from the National Mall. In the preliminary review submission, the applicant should provide a comparison of the studied mechanical system alternatives that highlights the potential benefits and trade-offs for each option and the rationale for the preferred option as it relates to impacts to visitor experience, program needs, and historic preservation considerations. Finally, the sixth revitalization component involves envelope improvements. The Phase One Building Envelope Repair Project, approved by NCPC, replaced the exterior drum envelope. The current phase improvements include providing insulation and waterproofing to the remaining building envelope and plaza. The applicant has proposed measures to address potential flooding, including active flood barriers at the museum end of the Sculpture Garden Tunnel and interior trench drains. The initial stormwater management concepts also include a rainwater harvesting cistern to capture and store runoff for reuse. These strategies are still under development, and staff recommends the applicant continue to coordinate with the District Department of Energy and Environment regarding the proposed approach. A total of 65 replacement trees are proposed to be planted based on the number of trees to be removed. Staff recommends that once the landscape design is more developed, the applicant provide the calculations of the tree replacement scores using the formulas in the comprehensive plan. NCPC is the lead agency responsible for compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, or NIPA, and will work with the Smithsonian as project owner to prepare an environmental assessment. The public scoping period for the environmental assessment was April 19th through May 31st of this year, and during that time, a two-part virtual public scoping meeting was held and a public site tour was conducted to gather feedback. Comments received are being used to develop the draft environmental assessment, which is anticipated to be completed in the spring of 2025 and will be posted for additional public comment at that time. With that, staff recommends the Commission support the Smithsonian Institution's goals to revitalize the Hirshhorn Museum Building and Plaza to fulfill the museum's mandate to provide the public with transformative art experiences into the future. Further, staff recommends the Commission find that the revitalization must balance visitor experience, program needs, and historic preservation considerations. Additional comments were highlighted throughout the presentation and are listed on the following slides. That concludes my presentation. I would like to introduce Ron Cortez, the Smithsonian Undersecretary for Finance and Administration, who will make a few remarks. Members of the applicant team and I are also available for any questions from the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shipman, Chair Goodman, and members of the Commission. We're pleased to hear your comments and address your questions about our concept design for the Hirshhorn Museum and Sculpture Garden Revitalization Building and Plaza Project. I would like to thank the Commissioners and their staff for their past and ongoing feedback that improves the design of the Hirshhorn Campus Transformation. As you've heard today, this project is the third and final phase of a series of improvements to the campus previously approved by the Commission that include the Building Envelope Repair Project, completed in 2023, and the Sculpture Revitalization Project, under construction. The Hirshhorn is challenged to engage the broadcast possible audience, including reaching more of the nation's most 36 million annual visitors. With the successful reconsideration of the building and plaza area, our goal is to dedicate 17% more space to the public. On behalf of the Smithsonian and the design team, we appreciate the Commission's support of the project goals to revitalize the Hirshhorn Museum Building and Plaza to fulfill the museum's mandate to provide the public with transformative art experiences into the future. We also appreciate the Commission's support for the majority of the preferred concept alternatives, including lower-level expansion and Sculpture Garden connection, hybrid fountain concept and the plaza design. We look forward to continued design development and exploration of alternatives through the Section 106 and the National Environmental Policy Act process in collaboration with Commission staff regarding the lobby expansion details and options to minimize the visual impact of the rooftop mechanical enclosure. I am joined here today by the project team of experts, design professionals, and Hirshhorn Smithsonian Gardens Office of Planning, Design, and Construction staff to address your concerns, comments, and questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shipman and Undersecretary Cortez. And thank you for mentioning that you have a whole team of professionals here, should we have questions for them as well. So to begin, do Commissioners have any questions for our presenters today or for their team? Any questions? Hearing none, we can turn on- Hearing none, we can turn on our cameras and is there a motion to approve comments on the concept plans for the Hirshhorn Museum Building and Plaza revitalization?
So.
There was a motion. There was a motion. And I'm sure Ms. Coster. And there's a second, so motion by Vice Chair Hewlett, second by Commissioner Dixon. Now we'll start deliberations, and so I'm going to ask for comments starting with Commissioner Green.
Thank you. I do have a question for the design team, and I'm sorry I didn't. Couldn't unmute myself fast enough. This is partly, I I'd asked a question last week through staff which was passed on to me, which I thought was helpful, and part of it is is to sort of get that out for the rest of the members. But a couple of questions. The first question was, could you tell us a little bit more about the preferred mechanical system? And and why you've selected this system and a little bit about the alternative systems that you've looked into? And 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 so we can, and then I have a second follow-up question on that. Help us understand a little bit more about the the extent of the rooftop addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Will we hear from Ms. Shipman or?
Yes, Carly Bond is available from the project team. I believe she's ready to answer that question.
Yes, good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Carly Bond. I'm the Director of Historic Preservation for the Smithsonian Institution. And I'm actually going to have our mechanical engineer expert answer this question, and then I'll tag on if needed. So Todd, please.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, so the the systems for the museum, as you can imagine, there aren't as many options available for a museum that needs to control the environment very strictly as there would be, you know, in a lot of other building types. But we did look at, you know, a lot of different alternatives and there really were not a lot of alternatives that were viable, things like, you know, thermally active slabs and things like that are problematic in museums, especially in existing museums. It would affect or floor heights and, you know, water over artwork. And so there's just a lot of, you know, restrictions complying with the Smithsonian standards and general practice for museums in terms of the alternate systems. So the system that we proposed is essentially an all-air system, which is typical for museums because it has the advantages of being able to provide good environmental control as well as keeping the the hydronic piping out of the gallery spaces.
And Mr. Carrick, thank you. And could you explain a little bit more about the why about the extent of the rooftop equipment and the height of that rooftop equipment that that is required? And how and what are some strategies that that could lower the height of that equipment?
Right. Yeah, well, the there's a number of things at play. One of the big things is just the, you know, the kind of the changes in the codes from nineteen seventy-four to now. So, you know, energy efficiency is a lot more top of mind. So one of the things that that does for the equipment to be more efficient is it unfortunately gets bigger in size for like the same capacity. So that that's one challenge is that physically, like, you know, the components within it will get taller and wider and the other one is the fact that you're required by code now to do energy recovery. In other words, you have to recover some of the exhaust air energy and transfer that into the outdoor air coming into the into the building. And typically, the way you do that is with, you know, some sort of a, you know, entropy wheel or something like that. So that's like another component that maybe fifteen years ago was not super common. And, you know, you can imagine getting those air streams right next to each other and and introducing this other component into the the system takes up a lot more room just from that fact. And then the third thing that is also very common in museums is to actually pretreat that outside air so that you have a more stable environment because the the big variation, you know, in the loads is typically the outside air. So if you stabilize the outside air, you provide more stable conditions within the galleries. So you kind of have these two components, right? So you have the, you know, the air being treated from the outside air and then going into the traditional systems at the same time. So all of that combined takes up a lot more room. And in terms of height, you know, there's a few few challenges there where, you know, when you have the different units spread around, they have to get down, you know, through the slab or two and get two shafts and things like that. So, you know, we're trying to minimize anything that has to go over top of the unit, but you can't eliminate that entirely. And so even if you took like the roof off of the penthouse area, you would probably have to elevate the units then and have some kind of a higher curb to allow you know, the ductwork and things to kind of flow underneath of it. And so I don't really think you would save much if any height in the end. And then the other problem then is it's obviously less advantageous from a maintenance perspective, which obviously maintenance is top of mind at the Smithsonian because, you know, it's mission critical equipment.
No, thank you for that answer, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the level of detail, and I just wanted to bring that out. I knew I'd appreciated appreciated the note that I got this week with that explanation and just wanted to make sure everybody could hear that that detailed explanation as to why the mechanical equipment is where it is. And so my my concern, obviously, is, you know, we have concerns about the height and the the view shed. And one of the things that I'd like to see, you know, a request of the design team as you move forward to this is I'd love to see, you know, to see a solar study within your within your 3D model to really see not just what it does inside the courtyard, but what impact it has on the quality of light in the galleries themselves. And and, you know, what maybe it, you know, and as the, because you're as you're going to lift that cone up, this is an important source of light for those galleries. And what is that? What is the impact? And and what strategies could minimize not just the impact on the courtyard, but on the galleries themselves? And but having said that, I just also wanted to just to to thank the design team. It's a it's a very careful design. And the fact that we're able to have this conversation at this level is indicates the quality of the the submission that came in. And and I just want to say appreciate that very much and I appreciate the design and I really like the transparency of the the first floor lobby, and I like the design approach that they've taken. I really do appreciate that, and I hope that continues in that direction. And would just like to see whatever we could do, whatever could happen to to minimize the impact of that mechanical penthouse, both when viewed from all, when viewed from within the building and the impact on the light on the galleries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. I see Commissioner Stidham has her hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chair Goodman. I'm sorry, I missed the questioning part. I did have, I know that the project is still in the process of section one oh six consultation. But could you give me a, I'd like to understand a sense of how those conversations are going, since this is such an important building, not only unto itself, but also its relationship to the National Mall?
Yeah, I'll just give a brief overview and then I'll pass it along to the project team, Carly Bond as well. So there have been three consulting parties meetings to date. And throughout the consult consulting parties meetings, there have been alternatives presented for the plaza design as well as the mechanical rooftop originally. For example, there was presented that programming space could also go along on the rooftop that was discussed with the consulting parties, and that was removed. With the plaza design, the frame concept, the one that you see today was the preferred concept from that group. And so that's what's being developed by the project team. So there are a few elements that have been worked through. Again, the fountain as well had several options. And those were presented to consulting parties and and started to narrow down to a more preferred concept. But again, this is early stages, and a lot of the concepts are still in discussion, but I'll also pass it along to Carly Bond if you want to expand on that.
I would, I would like to add that I think generally the consulting party's consensus is aligned with the the commission, the executive director's recommendations in general. And the rooftop addition for the mechanical enclosure that you're seeing today, as Laura has mentioned, is that I think the third or fourth alternative we've developed so far. So we have lowered it, we've considered moving it around, now we're looking at different profiles. And then to add on to a little bit to Commissioner Green's question, at this point, the size of the mechanical enclosure reflects the concept design, and it's very much our goal going forward to figure out the exact equipment needed for the different programming required and to continue to minimize and shrink the visibility of that impact. And also, just note that Hirshhorn is like the rest of the Smell South Mall campus, there the the sites are fully programmed, so it's a little bit unique from some of the larger Smithsonian sites on the north side of the mall where we have more opportunities around the building, more landscape places, places to to put some of this critical infrastructure. So it's really, it's a challenge for how programmed the Hirshhorn campuses.
And and for the building itself.
Yes.
Like you can just pop something on the roof because of the unique shape of the structure and the profile and the views. So thank you. Thank you very much.
I would like to just, could I also just add on a little a little bit about the lobby? Consulting parties have been very supportive of this symmetrical approach. You looked at a number of alternatives, including asymmetrical different options. So there's been very strong consensus for a symmetrical, transparent approach.
Right. Thank you very much for both your responses.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Shipman, Ms. Bond, and thank you, Commissioner Stidham. I don't see any other hands raised with questions, so I'm going to go back to the the commission. And next up would be a comment from Commissioner Tonstall Williams. Welcome.
Yes. Hello, thank you. First of all, I, the Hirshhorn has done a tremendous job. I think this is a complicated project on a prominent building. And I fully appreciate the complexity of getting mechanical equipment on the rooftop of such a prominent building. GSA is grappling with that for a number of our buildings. So I'm with you in solidarity. Some things to consider, I fully align myself with Commissioner Green's comments about considering the impact of the day lighting on the I guess, I guess it's not really gallery space, but the interior circulation that is kind of a key part of your experience in the building. So thinking about how the mechanical is being set all the way into the courtyard, obviously, we're giving primacy to the mall, but the courtyard experience is quite tremendous. And so I would like to see some day lighting studies and some consideration of what that does to the experience on the ground floor as well as within the the building itself. The lobby expansion, I think, is headed in the right direction. One thing I would like to consider, and maybe it has been considered and it wasn't evident in the rendering, is the way it reads from the courtyard side is kind of a monolith aligned with the building itself. If there's some way to either step that lobby back, like inset it a little bit, or provide some sort of gasket or setback between the the drum itself and the new lobby, I think that would go a long way in helping those read just a little bit more clearly and letting the, you know, the historic building sing and this being a very clear, modern insertion. And then lastly, the, I think the fountain is the tricky is tricky here. And while I agree the hybrid approach may be the way to go, I also think, you know, it's counterintuitive to put water right next to a skylight. And I worry that you may have some functional issues with that, and namely water infiltration, if it's not sort of just right. So I just encourage you to to really continue to explore that and make sure that you're you're detailing and how the setbacks and all of that is properly designed. Otherwise, I think you might be setting yourself up for some real maintenance challenges. But all in all, I think it's a great project. You guys have very sensitively dealt with the building. I had the pleasure of touring the exterior modernization with the AE a number of months ago, and it really was impressive, the work that you guys have done there. So I have every sort of confidence that you'll continue that, but just some things to consider as the design development proceeds. And that's the end of my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Tonstall Williams. Commissioner Dixon.
I'm fine, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash.
Thanks. Maybe it'll be a little bit of a different comment on this, but I actually think that adding the the roof structure, if done correctly, actually makes the building kind of look a little bit more visually interesting. I mean, there's actually, it's a little bit more symmetrical. If you look at the bottom of the, whatever you call it, the the circular, the cone, there's a little bit of tapering at the bottom right now, and I think adding it to the top, I just think if done correctly with the right materials, from a purely aesthetic standpoint, I think it actually kind of looks cool. I just want to make sure that it's not like going to be some some material that starts rusting and wears very differently from the rest of the building. So as much as I I think you should try to to reduce the the impact, I think for historical reasons and and other reasons, I think making sure you get the materials right is really important because I've seen so many building materials that are these metals that start running and stuff, and I just want to make sure it's high quality to add to to the building. So that it doesn't, I don't have as much heartburn over that as as maybe I I should, but I I think it's it's been worked as well as it can, and hopefully you can maybe reduce some of that profile a bit more. So that's really my only comment. So thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. And I know Commissioner Davis has joined us. Your comments?
Yeah, no, I I've been here the whole time. No, yeah, I appreciate the presentation and yeah, I don't have anything additional to add. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Hassett.
Sorry, I think this is Commissioner Jacetti.
I think it is Commissioner Jacetti. Okay, all right, very good. Commissioner Jacetti, no comment. Commissioner Kozart.
Thanks to the staff for the presentation. And yes, this was a really complicated project and great to see the evolution of it. And that's that's all my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. Commissioner McMahon.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the conversation concerning the the big issue, which is providing appropriate space for the mechanical equipment that's going to be needed. I agree with the mechanical engineer from my experience with most recently at BRAC one thirty-three, the everybody's popular Mark Center building. And just the size of the equipment required these days to provide appropriate treated air in a building this large or this important use. You're moving a lot of air, requires appropriate treatment, requires handling correctly to meet environmental leave requirements for energy conservation. And I think that driven along with probably really lack of additional space, although they they gave a quick concept down in the basement to put all the that equipment down there or on the building property itself drives you up to the roof. And so I think that I kind of with Commissioner Cash that probably the solution is at the end of the day is going to be up in the roof. I think most critical, as he said, is the selection of the appropriate material, cladding on that whatever ends up up there in a penthouse that reflects the the rest of the building to minimize what the impact looks like. And I think done properly, while it will be a change in in the view shed, it's not going to tremendously impact the, I think, the current view. So that's my only comment.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham, did you have anything else you'd like to offer?
No, just this, I associate myself with comments that have already been made. I think that rehabilitation and revitalization is a struggle with any building, particularly with this building, its shape, its form, where it sits, all makes that even more challenging. And I think that you have approached it very sensitively. And I agree, there are some things that you still need to work out, but I think you're going in the right direction for sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo.
Yes, I'd like to, I think Commissioner Tonstall Williams had had a number of comments that I I thought were specific and thoughtful from from a number of perspectives. I'd like to align myself with those.
Very, very well. Thank you, Commissioner Argo. And then Vice Chair Hewlett.
Yeah, hi. I echo my the sentiments of many of the other of our other colleagues. And also it is clearly very complicated and but I think a lot of effort has gone into this, and I so appreciate the effort. I appreciate the presentation by Ms. Shipman as well. And I do like the fact that you have this new entry from the Sculpture Garden as well. That was, those were my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. And I would just like to add that, you know, this is a unique structure. And it is a challenging structure. It's in a unique location as well as being a design, you know, standalone. It's 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 amazing building. And I think that the team has taken a very sensitive and thorough approach in this conceptual design to to some of the challenges ahead, and it's wonderful to see that. But the upgrade of the building, mechanicals in particular, do create a design challenge, and I do want to also associate myself And I do want to also associate myself with the remarks of the team and just understanding what the cladding will be and understanding what the impacts will be long term on, on the, on the structure. And I find Commissioner Cash's suggestion unique and interesting and hadn't thought of it that way. But I do look forward to continued discussion on these issues and presentations as your team begins to dig deeper into the final plan. And very grateful for this work today. Look forward to the future, future presentations. Are there any other comments or questions? With that, Ms. Coster, could you please confirm the motion in the second and take the roll call vote?
The motion was made by Vice Chair Hewitt and seconded by Commissioner Dixon. With that, Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
You, Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Tunstall Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Epstein.
And Commissioner Jacetti?
Epstein.
Thank you, Ms. Coster, and the motion is carried. And our final agenda item today, we will have an information presentation on the efforts to reimagine Anacostia Park. Ms. Shipman, hello again.
Hello again. The National Park Service has joined us today to provide an information presentation and overview of the reimagined Anacostia Park planning after. The concept plan under development encompasses Sections D and E of Anacostia Park in Southeast DC, outlined here in black. These sections are bounded by the 11th Street Bridge and the CSX Railroad Bridge in close proximity to the planned 11th Street Bridge Park, which was previously reviewed and approved by the commission. The project team is currently holding their third public comment period for the concept plan. The aim is to gather input on how to improve each of the proposed concepts for the park, though a preferred concept will not be selected at this stage. Staff provided comments during the previous public comment period in the fall of 2023, strongly supporting the proposed vision, the proposals to increase pedestrian and bike access to the park from adjacent neighborhoods, and naturalizing the shoreline where possible. We also indicated our interest to learn more about the response to climate change and sea level rise as plans are developed. I will also note that the project team is incorporating many of the equity considerations into their planning process that are outlined in the recent update to the Comprehensive Plan Introduction chapter. And with that, I will turn it over to the representatives of the National Park Service, Tara Morrison, Superintendent for National Capital Parks East, and Christine Bruins, Planning Portfolio Manager.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having us here today. We are very excited about this project, and as it is an extension of our 2017 Anacostia Park Management Plan, which looked at all of National Park Service lands along the Anacostia River. And this is our first next step in that effort to engage with our park neighbors and visitors to enhance, and as this says, reimagine Anacostia Park, taking into consideration all of the various user groups and interests in the resource that we manage. Again, very happy to be here today. And with that, I will turn it over to Christine for the presentation.
Thank you, Tara. And thank you, Commissioners, for your time this afternoon. This presentation includes a historical background and overview of our plan and process, as well as a high-level review of the concept plans themselves. Before we speak to the planning process and the plans, we first want to acknowledge how the river and park developed and evolved through the lenses of environment, civil rights, and recreation. So with that, can we skip to the next slide? And the next slide? A vibrant American Indian culture evolved around the abundance of fish, game, and other natural resources of the Anacostia River for at least 10,000 years. In the 17th century, the Naka Chunk were the primary residents along the eastern shore of Anacostia. One of the main villages stood near the park's entrance at modern-day Marion Berry Avenue. Englishman John Smith explored the Anacostia in 1608. Smith's arrival heralded both the rapid settlement of the land east of the Anacostia River by English colonists and the rapid decline of the Naka Chunks. The name Anacostia is a Latinization of this Algonquian name, Naka Chunk, which means "the place at the water's edge to trade." Next slide. In the 200 years following European colonization, the river suffered. Clearcutting a forest to make way for tobacco farming led to erosion and silting of the river. The once-deep river became shallow and filled with mud flats. The river was seen as a backwater of the nation's capital. In 1880, most of the city's sewer systems ran into the Anacostia, and even so, much of the area was agrarian. Next slide. Due to erosion and flooding, the shoreline changed over time. To keep the channel deep enough to service the Navy Yard, the federal government dredged the river. In the early 1900s, the Army Corps constructed a seawall on the banks of the Anacostia, dredging the river bottom and using its sediment to fill in the wetlands behind the wall, forming the shoreline and parklands that exist today. Park construction and landscaping projects continued throughout the 1920s and 30s. Next slide. In 1914, Congress passed legislation for the reclamation of the silted Anacostia River and its transformation into a public park, and in 1924, passed legislation which established the park. In 1933, Anacostia Park became a part of the National Park System. The 1924-enabling legislation provides the broadest framework we must manage towards and identified the following purposes of the park: to prevent pollution of the Anacostia River, to preserve the forest and natural scenery in and about Washington DC, and to meet the park and recreation needs of Washington DC residents. Next slide. Anacostia Park opened as a segregated park with 11th Street Bridge as the dividing line. South of 11th Street were black recreation areas with few amenities. North of 11th Street were white recreation areas and included a pool, recreation center, golf course, and sports fields. By the early 1950s, the park had become largely integrated. However, urban development, including highway construction in the 1960s, physically separated Anacostia Park from neighboring communities. Next slide. Anacostia Pool was built in 1936 as a New Deal project under the Public Works Administration. The pool was administered by DC government as a segregated pool. Civil rights advocates sought to integrate the pool, and a large riot occurred on June 29, 1949, which resulted in the closure of the pool for the summer. The pool reopened in 1950 as a fully-integrated facility, and this event paved the way for full integration of pools and recreational spaces in the nation's capital. Next slide. For a few decades, there were no large-scale infrastructure improvements in the park. To encourage people to come, the National Park Service built a large skating pavilion in the 1970s. Roller skating had been popular in Anacostia since the 1930s, and the idea for the pavilion came from the community. In 1986, the old golf course headquarters was retrofitted to become the Aquatics Resources Education Center, intended to highlight the native fish species of the Anacostia River and combine an educational component with the recreational pavilion next door. These two buildings, together with the boat launch nearby, were designed to activate the northern portion or Section E of the park. In 2007, the Anacostia River Trail connected segmented sections of the park, as well as with other regional trails, offering visitors hiking, jogging, and biking experiences along the water. Over the past several decades, the National Park Service, together with partners, have expanded recreational facilities and programming throughout the park. Okay, skip forward to the plan. So Anacostia Park is a unit of the National Park System managed by National Capital Parks East. It is expansive and encompasses approximately 1,100 acres of land composed of natural areas, cultural sites, managed waterfront areas, and public recreation facilities along the shores of the Anacostia River. It is a neighborhood park with national significance. Next slide. So as Tara and Laura mentioned, in 2007, the National Park Service developed and released the management plan for Anacostia Park. The management plan was programmatic in nature and established zoning for the entire 1,100 acres of the park. This development concept plan is site-specific to Sections D and E and evaluates the types of programming, special events, and community uses, improved access from nearby neighborhoods, location of recreational and community amenities, maintenance issues, flood mitigation, and infrastructure to support visitor use and to increase resiliency. The development concept plan will result in three management concepts and will include recommendations for operations and maintenance, prioritized design and construction projects and funding strategies, but will not include the selection of a preferred alternative. Additional planning and compliance, along with agency review, will be required for implementation. Next slide. So again, the planning area extends from 11th Street Bridge to the south, up to the CSX tracks to the north, and it is bounded by the Anacostia River and Fairlon Ave Southeast. We focused on these two sections of the park, Sections D and E, as they have the majority of public facilities and permitted spaces that the Park Service manages across the broader Anacostia Park. The concept plan includes elements in this project area such as the grounds, roads and trails, picnic areas, playgrounds, sports courts and fields, and the waterfront. This plan does not propose changes to the skating pavilion, which will be rehabilitated through a separate funded project. The Anacostia Pool and Rec Center, which is operated by the DC Department of Parks and Rec, or the Aquatic Resources Education Center, which is operated by the DC Department of Energy and Environment. Next slide. In 2021, with community input, we developed the vision and goals for the plan and shared an initial set of design concepts with community partners and agencies for feedback. Through this planning effort, we aim to improve the safety, accessibility, and directness between the park and neighboring communities and connections between activity hubs within the park, and enhance the visitor experience along and to the Anacostia River, restore and improve sports fields, sports courts, and other recreational amenities, and increase the quality and quantity of community gathering spaces. Next slide. So following the development of the vision and goals for the plan, we recognized a need to hear from more voices in the community. It was necessary to restructure our planning process with the intention to deepen outreach and engagement efforts with the existing Anacostia Park visitors, Board 7 and 8 residents, and community-based organizations with shared stewardship goals. Our planning team conducted one-on-one interviews with community-based organizations and local agencies prior to developing the preliminary design concepts. And feedback from these interviews formed the basis of the community outreach strategy for public comment periods two and three, which included an additional stakeholder meeting, an additional public meeting and comment period, longer comment periods, and significantly more in-park and in-community outreach events. We are now at the final public comment period, the revised concept phase, and we are anticipating finalizing the plan late this year. Next slide. And one more. So during the first comment period, we invited folks to comment on the vision and goals for the project. The comments reflected a deep appreciation for Anacostia Park as a community space and recreational amenity. We heard concerns about the condition and maintenance of park facilities, trash, safety, lighting, and access. We heard a desire to balance existing natural character with the development of additional amenities. And we heard a need to adjust the planning process as it related to our community outreach and engagement efforts. During the second comment period, we shared site plans that were organized by goal, topic areas, and directed feedback with questions such as what experiences on or near the water are important to you? And would you prefer to keep Anacostia Drive in its existing location or locate away from the river for portions of the park? And we heard a lot of more specific comments in this comment period. We heard a range of preferences for the allotment of programming for sports courts and fields. There was strong support for walking, jogging, and biking in any amenities near the waterfront. We heard suggestions for a variety of community spaces throughout the park and a desire for these amenities to be located near parking, restrooms, and shade. We heard strong support for enhancing visitor experience by the water. Many commenters expressed a desire for portions of the historic seawall to become naturalized. We heard support to address flooding issues on-site and support for stormwater facilities. We also got valuable feedback on areas of the park existing that have flooding issues. Commenters expressed a need for multimodal access, both within the park and to the neighborhoods. And lastly, we received a mix of preferences on whether or not to relocate Anacostia Drive away from the waterfront. Some noted that the driving along the water is a visitor and cultural experience that is important to the people who use the park now. Others preferred road realignment to open up waterfront spaces for different types of recreation or noted climate resilience or ecological benefits in their preference. During this last comment period, we are inviting folks to comment on the designs themselves. We want to hear what people like about them, what they wish were different, and we want to hear preferences on the layout of Anacostia River Trail and Anacostia Drive as it comes to mixing pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles. Next slide. Okay, so the public input from these extensive comment periods were incorporated into the design concepts. And across all three, all address maintenance issues, add restrooms and water fountains, increase the overall tree canopy, increase the forested buffer between the park and the interstate, improve sports fields and sports courts, retain existing playground areas, include an adult fitness area with exercise equipment, incorporate more seated shaded areas, and provide a combination of naturalized shoreline and restored seawall. They enhance wetlands and stormwater infrastructure, incorporate dedicated fishing areas, propose to upgrade and expand the existing boat launch, propose new gateways to the neighborhoods with opportunities for public art, improve connections to neighborhoods at the existing critical entrances of Marion Berry Ave and 11th Street Bridge Park, Anacostia High School, Nicholson Street, and Pennsylvania Ave Southeast. They also incorporate parking areas that are scattered throughout the park and improve trail connections, including a new trail access point beneath the CXX tracks towards the therapeutic rec center. Next slide. Section D of the park is the area centered around the Anacostia Rec Center and Pool. The existing condition is shown in the drawing to the top left. Concept 1 to the top right builds on the park's three existing activity nodes, including this area around the rec center and pool shown. This concept maintains many of the park's existing features, suggesting rehabilitating, enhancing, and growing within the park's current framework. It includes a multi-use waterfront area aligned with Anacostia Pool and Rec Center on the existing historic seawall. It retains the existing alignment of Anacostia Drive and Anacostia River Trail, and it includes limited areas where the seawall would be converted to a naturalized shoreline. Concept 2, to the bottom left, emphasizes the park's natural hydrology and allows this section of the park to occasionally flood as a water management strategy. Key facilities such as new recreation fields and picnic areas are located on higher ground where possible to provide additional protection from flooding. This concept has an expanded multipurpose waterfront area, again aligned with the pool, but slightly larger than Concept 1. There is an event lawn in the area immediately next to the waterfront plaza. There is also a beach area in this concept, which is in close proximity to the pool. This concept realigns Anacostia Drive the most of the three. It moves it behind the proposed sports fields, but retains Anacostia River Trail near the water. And this option includes the largest extent of naturalized shoreline. Concept 3 is the, the theme is emphasizing access to the water and waterfront development. This option includes a pedestrian commonod surrounding the rec center and pool area. It has the largest multipurpose waterfront area and event lawn in the and event lawn in the same locations, just a slightly different configuration. This one includes waterfront sports courts. It realigns Anacostia Drive between the sports fields and the pool, but less so than option two. And the River Trail remains in its current alignment. And then this option also includes a moderate extent of naturalized shoreline. Next slide. Section E of the park is centered around the Anacostia skating pavilion. The existing condition is on the top left. Concept one, off of the panel of this, but a very popular public comment was to include a large picnic pavilion in the northern extent of the park, so each of them does that in a different way. This one has a large picnic pavilion in the north of the park. It converts one of the sports fields to a picnic grove with large pavilions, volleyball courts, and other outdoor lawn and table games. The parking is reconfigured in front of the skating pavilion and reprogrammed with an event lawn and a covered pavilion for events, performances, classes, and hand dancing. Outdoor classroom area is provided near the Aquatic Resources and Education Center. A kayak launch is proposed at the existing dock. Anacostia Drive and Anacostia River Trail retain their existing alignment. Concept two, again, has the large picnic pavilion on the northern extent of the park, and in this option, it has a small parking area with it along with a restroom. This option daylights Pope Branch Stream, which is currently in a pipe underground, and naturalizes a stream edge along it. It includes a picnic grove near the skating pavilion and along the waterfront. It includes a multipurpose pavilion for events and performances and hand dancing. There's again a kayak launch at the existing dock. This option increases the forested buffer between the park and the water's edge to the north of the section. It realigns Anacostia Drive and Anacostia River Trail over Pope Branch Stream and adds an additional connection towards Fort Dupont Park along the stream. Concept three, again, has the large picnic pavilion with restroom and parking area. Waterfront plaza that's aligned with the skating pavilion and event lawn between the plaza and the trail. This option incorporates a beach near the skating pavilion. It adds an additional second dock for fishing and kayak launch. It includes a picnic area near the waterfront. It daylights Pope Branch Stream. It includes an outdoor classroom area that's located between the stream and the Aquatic Resources and Education Center. It realigns Anacostia Drive towards the highway side of the skating pavilion, and it realigns Anacostia River Trail behind the proposed waterfront development. This also adds an additional connection towards Fort Dupont Park. Next slide. Lastly, during this comment period, we are showing three trail and road configuration options to address conflicts among vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles. These options can be incorporated into any of the concepts and include keeping Anacostia Drive and River Trail as is, adding a bike lane to Anacostia Drive, creating separated trails for bicycles and pedestrians, and widening Anacostia River Trail. Next slide. Thank you all again for your time and attention. I will turn it back to Laura.
Great, thank you. In terms of next steps, when projects in this area of the park are identified for implementation, they will be subject to additional review and coordination under the National Environmental Policy Act and National Historic Preservation Act. They will also be submitted to NCPC for review. Staff plans to provide a comment letter to NPS during the current comment period. That will include any recommendations the commission provides today. That concludes the presentation. We are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shipman, Superintendent Morrison, and Ms. Bruins. That was very thorough. There's a lot to digest there. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the presenters? Any questions? I don't see any hands raised, so we're going to move on and start the discussion, and I'm going to ask Ms. or Commissioner Argo to begin, please.
I appreciate the ambition, the, the vision of this project. I don't have any specific questions. I'm still kind of taking it all in, but the concept, the, the concepts are wonderful and transformative. So, appreciate very much the work that's going into this.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Vice Chair Hewitt, please.
Yeah, I thank you for this wonderful presentation. It's so important, and it's so important that we really enhance the amenities at Anacostia Park and preserve that history. It's right on the river. The river is historic. It's important. It has not been given the same significance as some of our other rivers, and it's truly very important. And it also comes from, from Washington DC. You know, these rivers don't know those geographical boundaries, those political boundaries, so it comes into Prince George's County. And another part of the history of it is also the fact that there's a Dueling Creek, which is a tributary. And there are a lot of people, like, like a Commodore, Stephen Decatur lost his life, and Francis Cott Keys lost his life in duels there. But it's important that we have these amazing amenities, particularly when we just heard how they were juxtaposed during segregation, where you had very little amenities on one side, and you had the pool and the golf course on the other side. It's time that we really, really enhance this park, and I'm really pleased with the work that, that you all have done. And I think this is very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. No, I appreciate the comprehensiveness and, and the reach of this project. I think it's wonderful. And, and I look forward to watching it develop over time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Tunstall Williams, please.
Thank you. Echo the other commissioners. This is a tremendous project, and I think a great opportunity for the Park Service to engage the Anacostia community. It sounds like there's been a robust public consultation, and I hope that that will continue as the concepts develop. I think all of the concepts have things to recommend them. I defer to the community on what the right, appropriate mix of uses are, but I will say that any efforts that you can in the design to address climate change and resilience would be hugely beneficial, I think, here. Any investment you make along the water's edge, I think should be planned to allow it to flood and allow it to return to use as the tides dictate, because I don't think we're going to get to choose. And so to that end, I would also support a realignment of the Anacostia, the road, Anacostia Drive, to, to allow not only for flooding without impacting the roadway, but also to move the pedestrian and recreational experience closer to the river, because right now I think that part of the city is already cut off by so much highway and road infrastructure that allowing additional green space and access to the river would be a tremendous asset. So I commend the Park Service, and I look forward to watching this continue to develop.
Thank you, Commissioner Tunstall Williams. Commissioner Dixon.
Hello?
Hello? We can hear you.
I can hear you. Good. First of all, I'm, I've been waiting for this. As a product of our Anacostia River East, I played on the golf course. It's the first golf course I ever played on. I was there just as they made it available to us and swam at the pool. So I noticed in your, in the presentation, and first let me do all kinds of kudos and thanks to the staff.
Mr. Dixon is frozen, I believe. Let's see if he snaps back. Commissioner Dixon, if you can hear us, I'm going to move on to Commissioner Cash, and we'll come back to you if we can get you back. Okay, Commissioner Cash, could you please proceed?
Commissioner Cash may have momentarily left the meeting.
Okay, then Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I don't have any additional comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, and Commissioner Chiketti.
Hi, no additional comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Chiketti. Commissioner, we don't have Commissioner Dixon back. Commissioner Cozart, please.
Yes, I, I'm very inspired by this. And I really think, you know, especially thinking about the one hundred years of, of NCPC and the, the kind of archiving of the history and all of the kinds of actions that really did, you know, kind of divide communities, the highways, the turning our back on the river, those kinds of things that were documented and what NCPC put together. This is, you know, an example of taking up park resources and really leveraging it for repair of planning. And so I think it's terrific and want to encourage the Park Service to continue this engagement and work and on into reality. I know the devil's going to be in the details for how you pick amongst the concepts and prioritize and phase and all of that, but all of this is really important, and not only for the history, but the present, which is, you know, thinking about the other side of the river that does have a wonderful, full-on waterfront treatment that is really important to have on, on the side of the river that includes Anacostia River East neighborhoods, as Commissioner Dixon often says. And so just really encouraged by this and appreciate all of the work, the engagement that went into where we are right now. So, and thanks to the staff for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you, and I think at this point I can just say, as I'll associate myself with all the comments given to date, I will say having a family member over on, and lives in ARE, who is excited to see this development, I will speak up and just say, whatever the final solutions are, I hope they preserve the River Trail and keep the riverside focused on supporting non-vehicular traffic and bicycles and pedestrians and, and the rest, and keep that connection there. But look what to do with Anacostia Drive, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. And finally, is Commissioner Stidham on?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for the presentation, and to the applicant for such a great project. I think transformational is, is the word here, right? Transformational for not just the park, but also for the adjacent community, and this will bring a lot to the community and serves to, you know, make some amends on, on doing the right thing and making a great space for everyone, both the national visitor and the local visitors. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And did we get Commissioner Dixon back or Commissioner Cash? Are either one of you on? I get a note here that Commissioner Dixon is trying to get back on. In the meantime, I'll go ahead and make my remarks. I too want to associate myself with all the remarks that have been shared. I do think it's transformational, particularly in, in the area of equity, as has been mentioned before. And as, as it comes to climate resilience, that too is one of my, you know, passions, and I do support keeping the riverfront natural, inundatable, but designed for the residents, because I think we're going to be dealing with that. And there are plenty of examples up and down the Mississippi River, where I live in cities and towns, large and small, where we're re-embracing the river as an asset, not as a sewer, and also restoring and revitalizing neighborhoods that have been forgotten in the past that are typically, you know, what we call the Justice Forty neighborhoods, or neighborhoods that have been neglected. So I'm thrilled with this project. I'm absolutely overwhelmed by the amount of work that the team has put into this. Thank you very much to staff and team, and I look forward, you know, to going forward with this and refining it. So it's just very impressive, and broadening the park opportunities for the residents is huge. And I'm just sure Commissioner Dixon is, is also very happy with this, and I don't know if he's on, but it, I don't think so, but I see a hand up there with Commissioner Green.
Well, I, I was, I was greatly looking. In fact, I wanted to say nothing because I wanted to hear Mr. Dixon speak. And, and I'm afraid his passion was, was too much for the moment. But could we maybe carve out some time at the beginning of our next meeting to let him speak to this? Because I know this is an important project for him, and I, I hate to not, not hear what he, I mean, even though it's too late, I mean, it'll be after our official action, but I know I, I just speak for myself. I really wanted to hear what, what he was about to say, so.
I would absolutely endorse that, and if that's a motion, I'll, I'll entertain it, because I do think he's talked to me on the phone about it several times, and I just want to make sure it does, that the motion includes putting it into the comments that are going to be submitted today, so retroactively in some way, because I know he has, he has such a passion for this. And Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Green so much. I was thinking the exact same thing, but I keep hoping, I just hope he's going to get back on and save the day, so.
Right. I know, and I don't know Ms. Costa, if we have.
Yeah, we, we have been trying. I know he's trying to dial in, but I do not see him here. I, I know we do have a deadline for getting comments in, and I'm sure that at a minimum, staff would be delighted to talk with Commissioner Dixon and make sure that the staff comment letter reflects, reflects his sentiments. And I think, I, I don't even think you need a motion. You simply want to give him that opportunity just to, to reflect on the plans for this park at the, maybe at the beginning of the next meeting or at, at an appropriate time. We'll certainly wrap that in.
I think that would be great if there's consensus around that, and you could include some of his comments in the commentary before the deadline, and we could allow him to opine when we have our next meeting. I think that would be awesome. So again, I, I'm not sure if Commissioner Cash has rejoined us, Ms. Costa.
He has not, unfortunately.
All right, then we will move on. Again, I just want to congratulate the, the team. This is really impressive, exciting, and I can't wait to see it. So then this, without any further questions or comments, I don't see any or hear any, we're going to move on, and this concludes our open session agenda. The next regular commission meeting, as, as you know, is going to be on Thursday, September fifth at 1:00 PM, and there is no meeting in August. If there is no further business, this session shall stand adjourned.